Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this Ryman Town Board meeting. September 12th. Would you like to please stand in the place?
I'm glad we're here to talk in the United States of America, to the public, for the change of One Nation. We're going to be able to do this on the floor.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve our prior minutes of August 22nd. May I have a second?
Sure.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. We have a presentation tonight from Steve Sanzolo, who's the President under Morton Memorial Library Board, with regards to the 414 petition. Hi, Steve. Please.
Okay, hello, everybody. So, as Elizabeth said, my name is Steve Sanzolo. I'm sorry, I'm the President of Morton Memorial Library Board. So, I'm coming to the Town Board. We have a number of signatures. We want to go forward with a ballot on November 8th election day for another 414 vote. You're all familiar with that. Have been saw this recently, gone through that. The last time Morton did that was in fall 2013. So, we're required to have 10% of electorate that voted in the last gubernatorial election, which was 2,720 votes in Ryman. Oh, we need 272 signatures. So, I have in front of you the meeting motion by the Library Board and all the signatures, 35 pages. It's about 315 signatures. I understand that once I present this to you, the Town will cross-check with the voter list to ensure, and then I'll be able to come to the next board meeting in September. And I hope that we'll have a resolution to accept, because I understand it's my obligation to present it to the Board. If you accept it, verify, and then put it on the table for resolution. And then we, in turn, have to bring in the judge's standing Board of Elections 36 days prior to the November vote.
Yes.
As a point of information, I checked with the Town and the Assessor, and Michelle Lee. On a home assessed at 300,000 vols, this will be an increase of $5.08 a year.
Steve, what's the dollar amount of the increase?
30,000. We currently get 77,000. So, the motion is to have, well, the request is to have another 30,000 for a total of 170,000.
How much was the increase in 2013? 45?
Uh, no, we got 42. We had 35,000 prior to that. 2013, yes, a 42, which we received, brought us to 77. This additional 30, we raised to 170,000.
On the tax bills, do we, I know we put "library" how much, but do we break it down between Star and Morton?
Yes.
This is pro forma. We have to accept it and give it to the clerks, which we're happy to do. The clerks go over it and check it against our voter roll, and we'll have it on the agenda for you at the end of the week.
That's great. Now, I'll be there as the chairman. Okay, thank you very much. Present it to the gentleman, or?
No, you can give it to me. Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Steve, see you at the next meeting. Does anybody have any announcements? The one I have is that we are looking for a new Rec. Director.
Yes. Alice Cunningham, who's currently the Recreation Director, is leaving us at the end of the month. She's been with us for two years, done an outstanding job. I can't say enough good things about her. She loves to have a full-time position. The position is a half-time position, approximately. Pays by the hour, but, or will pay by the hour, but it's roughly 20 hours a week, year-round. More hours in the summer, fewer in the winter, but essentially a 2,000-hour-per-year job. So, if you know anybody that has qualifications in the recreation area or would like the job yourself, please let us know. We're gonna have an ad in the paper soon. Yes.
On our website, and?
We have a job description of all that you can have.
Thousand hours a year.
Pardon me?
Thousand hours a year.
That's right. I'm sorry. Thousand hours, that's right. Thousand hours is a salary. And again, Alice, if you're listening, thank you very much.
Well, listen. Thanks. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Any committee or liaison reports? I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-205, Contract with Weston and Sampson for Engineering Services in Connection with Reconstruction. Do I have to redact that? I think we have, yeah, I think we have. Is this the motion that I'm introducing, and then we're amending it on the floor?
Joe has the amended version. Although, Joe, I didn't, I didn't strike that bit at the top, so we'll do that as well.
Oh, contract with, uh, we ought to put his name.
I think we just say Contract 4.
Resolution 2016-205, a contract with an engineering firm for services in connection with reconstruction of the cemetery retaining wall. May I have a second?
Uh, on discussion of that, um, that we have, we received two bids. We solicited three engineering companies. We got two bids. The lower bid was from a engineer in Kingston, John Steadmire. I spoke with Suzanne Calle. She's met with him. He is experienced with stone walls, and he is the low bidder. So, and he has agreed in his proposal, he says extra work will be at $185 an hour. He's agreed to cut that to 155 an hour.
Joe, I'm sorry. 155?
155.
Which is what we pay principal engineers currently.
At Weston and Sampson. Morris is at R. Ward. So, I would like to amend the motion in our book to, in this form, which I passed out.
The, I'm just confused. Is the total 4,900 or 1,590?
It's 3,000 plus, I don't know.
3,500 plus 1,400, plus additional out-of-pocket per hour for any. I think the, I think there's, I think there's an error in the, the 1,595 was for Weston and Sampson.
Yeah, but you're not accepting that.
What I have in front of me, the?
This is the, uh?
Whereas is list both bids and then say we're gonna pick the lower.
This is the motion.
Yes, okay.
Joe, I didn't check the 49. It was 3,000.
No, no, it's right here. I've checked it. I just got confused by this new resolution. So, this resolution is a resolution to hire John Steadmire for $4,900 for services that will be fieldwork, construction plans, through shovel-ready, and any inspection work will be additional at $155 an hour. And we anticipate two to three visits during the construction. So, we're, that's what this resolution is. The 1,5950 in here was mentioning that we also received a mandate of that.
Yes.
So, any further discussion?
Was there a second to the motion?
All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-212, Preliminary Accounts Payable Abstracts, 934 Checks for $104,330.53. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2016-213 for our capital project abstracts. It's one check for $4,000. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. This is Resolution 2016-214 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. This is, Highway Superintendent has requested it. It's a transfer from the Highway Part Town Fund to cover anticipated incoming CHIPS funding for some road improvements. Any further discussion?
I seen votes. Good.
Fantastic. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-215. May I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Oh, sir.
Thank you. This is for the removal of streetlights on Hutton Street in Ryman Cliff. A resident requested us to have it removed and spoke directly to Central Hudson. Elaine, who's not here tonight, spoke with the resident with Central Hudson and all the other residents, and all are in agreement. We also checked with the Town, with the Village Police who patrols the area, and they're, they're fine with it and don't see an issue. This is the new LED lighting, which is pretty much light enough, you know, can light a runway. So, if anybody's having trouble with that, you can contact us, and we'll work with you in Central Hudson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-216, Early Release of Final Payment Check for Camp Director and Camp Medical Director. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? For the public, Alice is our Rec. Director and our Camp Director. We broke her salary up accordingly. Camp is finished, and she would like us to release the final camp payment, instead of spreading it out over the next coming weeks. All in favor of that? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved. Again, thank you, Alice. Resolution 2016-217. May I have a motion? I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Now, I don't know if we want to pass this tonight or discuss it.
No, I think we should not pass it. We just got a revision from Warren this afternoon, and I think we've had a chance.
Do you wanna discuss it and table this for passing?
Yeah, I do wanna discuss it. I can discuss it now, or we can go on and discuss whatever you want.
I think we have no other resolutions, and we're onto discussion items. So, why don't we just discuss this, and we'll table it until our next meeting?
Yeah. I think there's two issues that we have, should get back to Warren. Warren is on approval authorities, or purchasing authorities.
On page four?
His draft, uh?
Page, I'm sorry, page six.
Well, it's page six. And, um, the questions that I have is one, Planning Board, Planning Secretary, zoning board, zoning secretary. I think now, John, that runs through you?
No.
Who, uh?
Anything over this amount that comes before the?
Well, who has authority to make purchases for the Planning Board or the zoning?
Well, we approved all the vouchers.
We approved the vouchers. Somebody with authority has to sign off.
Planning Board and zoning Board Chair sign off on any amounts under a certain threshold if it's in their budget. It has to be budgeted.
Well, everything is budget.
No, that's not true. Things get signed off on that aren't in our budget.
Well, okay, but everything should be in the budget. Question is, can the clerks, our part-time clerks, they have authority to make a purchase?
No.
Section 5 looks like it says the town clerk has responsibility for purchasing related.
The town clerk has authority for office issues related to that office, but not Planning Board secretary, you know?
Well, say they need a new computer, a new printer. We had that. Or the assessor's office needed. Well, assessor, I guess, is the department. But why? You know, I think the procurement thing has an authorized person, and then the liaison has to sign off or somebody signs off on it. So, you don't have people willy-nilly going out and making purchases.
Well, we've never had people willy-nilly, but I understand how it relates to this. Do you think that this section's been changed too much against what we have?
We never had anything in there.
Well, we do have.
In our previous procurement policy. This is a new section, I believe.
And we can take out the Water and Sewer Superintendent. We have a list of who can buy what. I think that should be added to here. I think this list should be broadened.
Yes, I agree. Then, there's also a question of maintenance department. I call it a department, and cemetery now. But under the draft that Richardson gave us, those are not departments. So, this has to dovetail. But I assume we wanna still continue the authority of Gary and Bobby to make purchases.
Depending on the threshold of the purchase, yes.
Yeah.
But we've also upped these thresholds, so that's.
Right, that's the next topic I wanna talk about, is those thresholds. But, so I'll tell Warren we wanna include cemetery maintenance. I'm not sure where we're coming out on ZBA and planning. Can the clerk, assuming expenditure?
The clerk could, but this is going up to $3,000, and I think that's too high for clerk.
I agree. You know, I, well, let's talk about that now. I sent, I don't know if you, anybody has it. The old authority was that up to $250 you can make it.
This is what the, is this the email that you sent out?
Yeah, it's an email, September 7. When I did a chart. Under the old authority, if you got above $250, you had to get an oral bid from at least two vendors. The new draft brings that to 500. I still would stay with the $250 myself. You know, it's amazing the difference in prices if you ask. And $250 is.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
To stay with the $250.
Yeah, I mean, it really just means if we're getting a fax machine or, you know, that it has to be, they have to check two different sources.
Yeah.
Which, which, believe me, there's exhaustive shopping around here. But I'm fine with leaving and making this, I think it's good.
Okay, then the other question was, Warren increased it from, this is confusing, the, um, he had three vendors. We need a level for three vendors. The old one was.
Three to, three to 10.
Three to 10. Again, I would stay with that for written quotes. He's proposing to raise it five to 20.
Why, did you speak to him why he was raising this?
I think he just did this for Hyde Park.
Right, well, he's got in here, he's got in here, you know, public sewer, which doesn't apply to us.
Right, that's, I think he just took it from another.
And let's stay with our same levels.
Okay, I agree with that.
Is everybody okay with that? We're not Hyde Park.
Yep, okay.
Are you all right with that? And you wanted, Joe, you're all right with that, staying?
I haven't seen any problems at all.
No, we have no problems. We'll stay with our old levels, unless he, you know, has some good reason. And I've been away on vacation. I tried to get him today. I didn't get him. And then we want to, we want to enumerate the approval list?
Yeah, I think we decide on cemetery maintenance the way it is. What about the ZBA clerk and?
I think it has to be signed off by their chairs.
Or chair.
Yeah, and I mean, I saw in one thing that you had taken out providing their funds available in the budget, but you centralized that in one area.
Yes, yeah, he put it. So, you didn't have to review it every one.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I think the chairs and the liaisons have to sign off on it, and then it has to be approved by the Board.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not in the budget, the Board has to put it in the budget.
Yeah. I would rather the liaisons and the chair sign off on it. We've had a couple of issues with travel that hasn't been budgeted for that we've had to reimburse, which, you know, by no fault of anybody, just it falls through. So, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, thanks. Attendance of Planning Board Member at Affordable Housing Conference.
This is apparently members of the Planning Board for credits. And a member of the Planning Board would like to go to an Affordable Housing Conference and use that for the four credits. She's not asking for any funding for it or mileage, and I think we ought to do it, although technically, there's no issue.
But who, who decides on the, when, when those emails went around, it seemed as though the Town Board decided on the credits. I don't believe we have that oversight on what credits are appropriate for continuing education.
Melanie told me, yeah, we do. I spoke with her and Art World. They were there together, that we can decide this would fulfill the requirement.
How do you know we have that authority? We've never approved anybody's education before.
Right, but they were all conferences related to planning. This is, this is different, because there is no Affordable.
I'm fine with it. The more somebody knows about this, the better. Anybody else? Okay. About daily employee work laws.
Yeah, we, we.
Okay, I put this on, and I spoke to Highway as to why they do it. And apparently, they do it because they have different budget lines for labor. So, and, and not every person fills it out. It's only the foreman does it, and then.
He does it for the department.
Yes. And then the clerk takes that and uses that when she gives the payroll information. She uses that to figure out what lines that we should charge it to. And I've done a revision of the one for maintenance, so it ties into the four budget lines that are used.
That's good. I'm also interested in knowing how much time is spent on field maintenance in which fields? Because as we grow the park, we're going to possibly be needing to add labor, and I wanna know. I wanted this tract all year, and I didn't get it, and it's, it's not helping me at budget time. It's.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think.
I wanna know where Bobby is and what he's doing, and where the part-time laborers are.
Look, from my point of view, it'd be nice to know which fields are hidden, or how much time, so we can build. We can start looking at, well, this field's cost us this much a year, so we can maybe offset some of those cost management fees.
And in the summertime, Bob needs to be here for the camp, not up at Stone Church with earmuffs on, you know, where we've had to drive up to get him, and we've had issues. So, it's, it's really about overseeing, you know, yes, if we're going to be funding more things fee-based, we have to know what they cost.
No, but I've never had a problem getting him on his cell phone. He's very good in answering and calling back, so I don't know what you mean by earmuffs.
Well, it means he has ear, we, we had to drive up and get him several times this summer. So, I wanna know.
Maybe the earmuffs is when he's mowing, where you gotta wear.
Yeah, I just wanna know what we're doing and where, as we expand fields.
But I think we gotta be careful. We don't start micromanaging.
It's not micromanaging. I wanna know how much time is being spent there.
That should be on the.
I wanna know where they are and what they're doing. I wanna know how long it takes for the docks to go in and out, how long the maintenance of each thing takes. I wanna know. So, I don't care what it looks like, as long as the day's accounted for and we know what chunks of time are where by each employee in the maintenance department. Cemetery doesn't concern me as much, because all the work is there. There are burials, and there's upkeep. If you wanna split it up, that's fine.
No, and there's only one budget line, so it's not the same issue.
Yeah, but a lot of this stuff is, a lot of this work is on one budget line, but I still wanna know what goes into that. You know, there are fields that he takes care of all over, so. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, thanks. Schedule for budget meetings. Did you put this on, Joe?
Yeah, I put it on, because it's always a problem. If we don't have in advance, we save the dates. Save the dates. When do we think we'll have a budget meeting?
We're way behind. Shelley has had to treat a new payroll clerk, a new purchasing clerk, and now a new secretary at the Highway Department. And really, the secretary's function there is all bookkeeping-related. So, I had thought to have a draft ready by the end of this week. I don't think we will. We have met with Brad Palmiter, you know, for health insurance.
Do we, should we set something?
We already have a special board meeting set up for the 20th of September, yes.
What, the 20th?
Special board meeting?
No, we don't.
No, you mean the, no, we have a meeting to meet with a workshop for.
Oh, Richardson?
Yeah.
That's, uh?
You guys, nothing's happening in September. This doesn't get to you until October 5th. So, I mean, I'd hope to have it, when do we have to lay, the 25th? Yeah, I don't, I think the dates, I have to give it to the clerk by 30th. He can give it to you by the 5th. Do you have to give it to them at a meeting?
Uh, yeah.
You wanna set something for October 17th?
No, no, you have to receive the budget first. So, let's do the.
Yeah, okay, but that's just pro forma. We just.
We still have a kind of form. October 5th, let's have a meeting to receive the budget.
October 5?
Yeah.
You know, we have a Town Board meeting on the 6th.
We can't, you cannot receive it that late. It has to be done by the 5th.
By the 5th?
Yeah. We have one on October 6th? Why are we having October 6th?
I don't know. Actually, I have one on July 6th.
Yeah, because of the Jewish.
Is that the Richardson meeting?
No, because that's the Jewish holidays.
We're having a meeting on Friday?
No, Thursday. Thursday, the 6th. So, let's do the 5th. What time do you wanna do it?
Whenever you can. We just need a forum.
You could do it in the afternoon. Well, in the afternoon.
It's a bad day for the, I don't know.
We could do it another day.
Can you do it on the 6th?
You cannot have, you have to have it before the 5th.
The 5th, right.
Yeah. I mean, we could do it on Monday.
It's turning to a holiday, I don't know, right?
No, it's the one on the 5th. That's in order of the, like, can you make it?
If we could do it at 5, I could be.
Can you do it a little earlier? Could you do?
No, I have, I have a spot in the case that.
The 5th.
5:00 PM on the 5th to receive the budget. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I may be able to make that.
I don't know about Elaine. You know, we're scheduling this without her.
Yeah, but she can react. But this one is just a pro forma. We're not going to do anything.
No, but usually I take you through it and tell you what my approach was. Do you want to say 6? Because I know she can be here by 6.
Which one am I doing?
Yep.
6:00 PM?
There's a ZBA meeting that starts at 7:30.
This should be 20:00 PM. Thank you. 6:00 PM on the 5th is okay with everyone? I think we should probably have a name here to schedule the meetings. We could schedule them on the 5th.
Well, so we tentatively do it and then we can, at least I can block that out. We can at least change something. And.
You want to do it at our next meeting when we're all here?
Well, you mean the 26th?
No, he's talking about workshop meetings.
Workshop meetings.
The 30th.
Well, I'll tell you what one thing you guys should decide is if you want to meet with Brad to go over health insurance, you should do that sooner rather than later. I have packets for each of you. You can look at it. There's really, in my opinion, only one clear choice. You're going to want to satisfy yourselves on that. So you can schedule that in the next week or two if you want.
I'm kind of tied up till around October 17. I may be able to do.
Well, I mean, this is going in the budget, so if you want to affect any change, you know, you should do it sooner rather than later. This is September 12th.
What about the 14th, September 14th this week?
You, it's, I've met with him. I don't need to.
Right, we're talking about Ed Allen.
Yep.
Why don't you get in touch with Brad, find out what it is and I'll notice the meeting? Let John know and I'll notice it.
Okay.
But is the 14th a possibility for you, Ed?
What time?
During the day because Brad is.
Now, you know, the only other thing about receiving the budget by the 5th, if I get it done sooner, I'm going to want to give it to you sooner.
Yeah. The 14th is not, why do these are generally bad for me?
What about Thursday afternoon, 15?
Sure. Yeah, and John, I have to hang up.
No?
Why don't you guys figure this out and then we'll just notice it?
Okay, let's stay for a couple minutes after.
If I get the budget done the week of the 26th, I'm going to want to give it to you and push up our schedule or we can let it linger, whatever you want. We have to set the public hearing, we have to adopt the budget by November 20th and we have to have the public hearing, I think, the Thursday after the election, which is the 10th. So everything should be done by then.
November 10. The election is the 8th.
You want to do budget workshops 17, 18, 19? October.
I can't do the 19th. I could do the 17th.
I can't do the 8th.
What?
I can't do the 18th.
So let's do the 17th, tentatively.
I'd like to have three, I would like to have three meetings right together. I don't want to spread this out. It's bad for momentum. I want to get through it. Like 17, 18, and 19?
I can't do the 19th.
Want to do 17 and 18?
I can only do the 18 during the day.
Well, that won't work because Elaine can't do it. I'll do this via email. I'll have to get a, a doodle schedule and, you know. Okay, so we have nothing set except for the 5th.
Yeah, I don't have three days together till the 25th, 26th, and 27th of October.
Okay, so we'll have to do this with a scheduled doodle via email. The only thing we have set is the 5th. We should have a backup date sooner in case, I guess we could do it at the town board number if it's done sooner. All right.
You know, maybe on budget, we've kind of handled enough over the years and I think we're getting it out.
We only have one meeting last year.
To the bottom of it, right.
I mean, I'm assuming that there is no majority to exceed the tax cap this year. So there are going to have to be cuts. I'll do my best. I'll fund requests out of capital funds balances. As you know, we have another contract negotiation coming up with the Highway Department, which really shouldn't affect budget, although health insurance is going up another, I don't know, 12, 16%. So, you know, we can put for that in.
Should we tentatively set a budget meeting for the 17th or the 20th? I know you want to do it in the second quarter. And maybe we don't need the 20th, you know, we can cancel on it.
Sure.
Okay.
What, hold it, what days of the week is that?
About Monday and Thursday.
That's fine. At 6:00 PM? Do we want any more?
Why don't we schedule one more and then we can always cancel it?
We can't do anything sooner or earlier October?
But so there's a planning board meeting on the 17th, so we may have to meet downstairs.
Okay. Nothing the week of the 5th or after that for anybody?
Budget meeting.
I can. Yeah, come stay on the 10th.
Is the 11th 20th?
20th.
Okay, that's just a case.
Monday is Columbus Day. And I got Jewish holidays, the 11th and 12th.
About the 13th I've got.
And I got Affordable Housing on the 13th.
Well, you can reschedule Affordable Housing.
What?
You can miss an Affordable Housing or reschedule it to get the budget done.
Well, we started at 7:00 on the 13th.
I can't, no. 6 is better. 20th, we don't have the room.
No. Or use your office.
It needs to be a public meeting. I mean, we could invite people in there.
What about downstairs?
That's what you have to do.
Yeah, can we do the 20th downstairs?
You know what? I want to have it up here so it can be taped. I don't want to go down there. I want these meetings accessible. So I'm going to say again, let's go back to a scheduled doodle. I don't want to set these meetings now. Elaine isn't here and, you know. We have the 5th scheduled. If I get the budget done earlier, I will try and get a forum to at least lay it down and we'll see if we can't bring the schedule forward. Sound good? Education and travel, anybody else on this? You all right with that, Joe?
Yeah, sooner we can do it, the better because the days go by fast. People take out of the maintenance.
I don't, I'm from the realm, so. Budget session up here. Education and travel expenses for boards and employees. We had an issue recently where we had an unexpected overnight travel. I just want to come up with a policy for overnight only that says it's the individual incurring the expenses responsibility to get it approved in advance of the trip. So we can't feel like I gave it to the secretary and it wasn't done. It's got to be approved in advance and everything, all expect, you know, whether it's mileage, food, hotel, fees have to all be estimated on the approval. So I'd like that on a purchase order filled out in full, getting advanced approval by the chair or department head and who else? Me, the board, a liaison? I mean, I don't want to exceed the budget anymore.
This is going to come up on the 20th with Richardson because he has a policy, so we probably ought to hammer it out when he's here so we can take it down. It's in his draft of the employee.
What do you mean by that?
The 20th, I think.
The 20th.
I'm replying to think that somebody on board ought to sign it off.
Yeah. I think it should be the liaison and me because of the budget officer.
Is that what we have in September? September is the next big one.
Well, we have another town board meeting.
Yes, I've been met, no, right.
What time is Richardson on the 20th?
6:00 PM.
6.
All right, so we're going to wait and do this policy with him. You're going to talk to Brad Palmiter. Shelley has all the folders for the health insurance. If you want to get them from her or go over it with her or I, please do it. There's really one clear choice. More money, surprise, surprise.
What else is there?
Any other issues that anybody else has to talk about? Any, probably comment on any of these items or non-agenda items? Okay, I think.
I was just thinking on the health insurance, we probably at some point ought to bring the union into it.
Well, we don't ask them. They ask us, remember? Loud and clear. I mean, this is also, you know, when we ask, actually, I got a copy for them. I'll forward it to them, but this is also a part of contract negotiation.
Yeah, but.
We're bound under the rules of this contract negotiation, which carries over until we have a new contract to provide equivalent health insurance. This is the silver plan that we wanted to do last year that then evaporated. Remember the one that went into the ether and we couldn't get it? It's back this year. So it's a no-brainer. I think it'll make them happy. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn unless anyone has anything else to discuss. Second, all in favor? I oppose. So move, thank you, good evening.
And once you can.